All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the July 17th, 2024 morning session of Portland City Council. Kealan, please recall the words.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Maps.
Here.
Rubio. Ryan.
Here.
Will.
Thank you, Kealan. Now we will hear from legal counsel and the Royals of Borden and DeCorm. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome to the Portland City Council. Today's item with the Council of the City of Portland, you must sign up in advance for the council agenda at whpoportland.com/council/agenda. Information on engaging with council can be found by the council clerk's page. Individuals may have to wait three minutes unless the presiding officer states on their face that their microphone will be muted when your time is up. The presiding officer will serve as a disruptive conduct such as sharing, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony, or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. If you are a lobbyist, identify the organization you represent. Virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move into communications. The first item is 660. Kealan, let's hear from the first individual, please.
Request of Joanne Reese to address council regarding temporary alternative shelter site at Reedway in Lentz. Joanne is joining us online.
Can you hear me?
Sure can. Thank you.
Joanne Lentz Strong Housing Team, Safe Rust Village Reedway Stakeholder, Good Neighbor Agreement Committee Member, Updating January Communications. Continued trauma to diverse communities of poor, working poor, and working-class neighbors unhoused and housed increased city sanctioned blight. The city operates in bad faith. The city convened a February 2024 GNA committee, seven months after Reedway's July 2023 opening, after announcing its expansion. Neighborhood problems will increase as capacity doubles this summer. In March 2024, Wulamit Week uncovered allegations of serious misconduct at Clinton Task and SRV Reedway. Lentz Strong requested a community advisory committee be jump-started. We were arbitrarily instructed that a CAC was contingent upon assigned GNA. As a GNA neared approval, we were told that only GNA signatories could be on the initial CAC. Two days before our July 11th GNA meeting, when the GNA was to be signed, the meeting was arbitrarily canceled by city shelter team, with no further meetings till September. The GNA is aspirational. However, community guidelines for guests should have less mixed messaging. Strictly prohibited and not allowed behavior has been discretionary. Unclear expectations do a disservice to unhoused guests, urban alchemy practitioners, and housed and unhoused neighbors eroding people's autonomy. When HB 4002 takes effect in September, there will need to be clear criteria regarding operations at low-barrier shelters. Despite repeated questioning, stakeholders only received updates yesterday on the urban alchemy investigation into allegations of onsite drug dealing, and this probably only because I am testifying today. This should not be gate-kept information. SRV Dashboard indicates 12 deaths between July 2022 and March 2024. Statistics as to causes of death and where would help to proactively address health concerns in houseless populations, assess the effectiveness of extremely low-barrier shelters in recovery, and pinpoint locations where onsite or local drug dealing might be contributing to overdoses. Lentz was forced to host an SRV task funded with public dollars. The SRV task is on our turf, and any activity therein is on our watch. Being told by the city that the city trusts urban alchemy and reminding that people die every day is not reassuring. A commitment to alleviating the humanitarian homeless crisis would include addressing the root causes of homelessness and ensuring transparency, accountable accountability, and equitable collaborative problem-solving with the housed and unhoused neighbors in frontline neighborhoods. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. We're going to see if there's anyone from the mayor's team available to respond, but Mike, is it possible that your team can look into this further?
Certainly. Absolutely.
It would be brandy.
Any questions for my colleagues? Thank you so much for your testimony. Next individual, item 661.
Request of Lejeune Thorson to address council regarding our next caller.
Welcome. Three minutes, please.
Thank you. I'm Lejeune Thorson, board member of the Downtown Neighborhood Association, which has over 500 members. This is Dr. Dean Barnett, member of our Land Use and Transportation Committee and resident of the American Plaza Towers, which 520 people call home and which is the east neighbor of the proposed PSU site. We're going to share my three minutes to express our concerns about the ability of Southwest Lincoln to accommodate the influx of traffic that the PSU proposed performing arts complex would bring. We have read Kittleson's report, which focuses on truck loading and unloading on the site and parking for visitors on the site. This is not a traffic study. Our concerns are about how passenger vehicles and mass transit can be accommodated on Southwest Lincoln.
The PSU site is bounded on the east side by American Plaza Towers, a private residential property, and on the south and west by I-405 and the Fourth Avenue off-ramp. Lincoln Street, the north boundary, is the only city street with access to the PSU site. Lincoln Street also serves public transportation, the MAX orange line, as well as four bus lines and FX2. The MAX station platform in the middle of Lincoln takes up two lanes. There is one lane on each side giving east and west traffic. The TriMet buses pick up and drop-off passengers in those lanes with no turnout. Private vehicles, cars and trucks, also share that lane with buses. Lincoln is the street that leads on to the Tillicum Crossing for the connection between East Portland and downtown. The challenges and costs of changing Lincoln Street to accommodate the PSU proposal have not been addressed or discussed with TriMet. PSU presentations have suggested the traffic issue will be addressed by the city after site selection. We respectively suggest that you include PBOT and TriMet experts when you consider PSU's proposal to build two performing arts venues, a hotel, a conference center, bars and restaurants, along with classrooms and underground parking.
PSU announced at their presentation to the public on April 27th that they had contracted with Kittleson and Associates for a traffic study of the area around the proposed site.
We're at three minutes, and since it's public testimony, we've got to hold the line on that. We welcome any subsequent comments to be submitted in writing. So appreciate your testimony.
I will do that. Let me just say one more thing. Our ask is that if there need to be changes on Lincoln, that the expenses of those changes be calculated into PSU's cost.
Appreciate it. Thanks so much. Thank you. Next individual, please. Item 662.
Request of Mark Porras to address council regarding government transparency. Mark is joining us online.
Welcome, Mark. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Right. Good morning, Presiding Officer Gonzalez and Commissioners Maps, Ryan. My name is Mark Porras. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm a member of Portland Cop Watch, a grassroots volunteer organization that is working towards a police bureau free of brutality, corruption, and racism. Today, though, I'm just testifying as an individual or 20-year resident of the city of Portland. Back in May, I signed up for this communication spot to talk about government transparency. I've said this before, but thanks again to the folks behind PDX 311 who respond to website feedback. There's a lot of good info on the city's website, and I appreciate the many opportunities to provide feedback. The 311 folks do a great job of getting that feedback to the right content donors. And thanks to this council clerk for promoting and enabling transparency and for reaching out to offer communications waitlist opportunities when there are cancellations. Now, there's a short agenda today. I can only guess that one reason the session wasn't canceled is because there's a full slate of five Portlanders signed up for communications. So thanks for being here to listen. On a day like today, with such a short agenda, council might consider adding additional communication spots. The next available date for communications is in mid-September, two months away. It's a long time for community members to wait to be heard by their elected representatives. You might also consider adding an additional five communication spots every week. It doesn't seem unreasonable to provide 30 minutes of open public testimony per week so you can hear what's on the minds of 10 Portlanders instead of five. And it's also important to recognize that as the election draws near, folks aren't just addressing you. We are also speaking to all of the soon-to-be-elected officials who are watching and preparing to serve in our new form of government. A few things came up during last week's session. I did get confirmation that members of the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing were not notified about the rapid-response team introductory press conference until after the fact, and that's disturbing. The mayor pulled one of 18 items off the consent agenda so staff could present, and there was some invited public testimony. It would be ideal if the public-facing testimony order smart sheet denoted whether each person was invited, and if so, by whom. And council should consider the message that is sent when deciding the order of testimony and whether to give invited testifiers more time to speak than those who sign up the usual way. And finally, from last week, risk management in the city attorney's office presented a $29,571 settlement agreement with the Portland Police Association for an employment discrimination claim. No facts were provided, no exhibits were attached, and the attorney stated that there was a small exception to the complainant's release of claims and left it to council to ask about it, but nobody did. Commissioner Maps, before voting, said that the facts of the case suggested that there might be cause to look at the Bureau's procedures in situations like this. If so, it would be nice for the public to know the facts of the case in advance of council voting on it. I asked the listed contact two days before the meeting if they could share any more information with the public and was told that I should submit a public records request. I filed a public records request, which might get filled in the next few weeks. So the city's strategy here worked to perfection. There were no questions, no testimony. We didn't have any facts about why the city agreed to a $29,000 settlement with a PBB detective who's been with the Bureau for 25 years. So might there be cause to look at the police Bureau's procedures in this case? Our city government works best when people are fully informed and genuinely encouraged to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. You know, we disagree about much-related policing in this city, but I do appreciate your respecting both the spirit and the letter of our council rules by signing up for communications today. Thank you. Next individual, item 663.
Request of Addie Smith to address council regarding taking over responsibility of the Department of Community Justice.
Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Addie Smith. I am a Portland resident, and I'm coming to you on behalf of my son, Jalen Smith. I have spoken with you all before in the past. I am a 35-year-plus Democrat voter, and this year, in this coming election, I have told you all that not only my family, not only myself, my daughter, my other son, my 28-year-old son, and my son Jalen, who is incarcerated right now in the Washington County jail, but his grandparents, my parents, his paternal grandparents, his aunts and uncles, we have all collectively decided, his cousins, several other family members, that we are going to either not vote if we can't stomach the vote for Trump, or if we can, we are going to support Trump. Here is the problem that Black people in this country have. We have collectively decided, for some reason, to sell our soul to Democrats, and we get absolutely nothing in return. The LGBTQIA++ community gets your respect, they get your ear, they get your support. Asian community and all of those things get your support. The Jewish community, 100%, 10,000%, get both of your ears, your eyes, and your support. But when it comes to Black women, when it comes to Black voters, we don't get anything, and you get our vote across the board for absolutely nothing. We come to you consistently, and we tell you to stop these white races from discriminating against our children, from murdering our children, from harming our children. You do nothing. And this year, I am going to vote for people I know won't do anything, instead of continuing to vote for people who I have trusted that when they told me for my vote that they would do something for 35 years and have not done a thing. You think that what you do collectively for all of those other communities and white people is what Black people should be grateful for. We haven't gotten reparations in this country for slavery, which was America's original sin, not the Holocaust. We can't get you guys to move an inch. My son has been sitting in the Washington County jail now for crimes that he did not commit because you all know that judges like Kathleen Proctor, like Ricardo Manchaca, like Brandon Thompson are disgusting, vile racists, and you guys sit here and won't do anything about it. You let my son sit there, and you won't support him, you won't speak out, you won't even hold Rachel Mortimer, who is responsible for the Commission on Judicial Conduct, responsible for going after these judges. It is her responsibility. When they violate the law, when they violate their code of conduct, when they violate ethics, when they commit perjury, it is her responsibility to admonish them, to reprimand them, and you guys don't do that. You don't deserve my vote, not the president, who's committing a genocide, none of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next individual, please. Item 664.
Request of Robert Butler to address council regarding new Bull Run water treatment plant.
Welcome, Robert. You have three minutes.
I'm Robert Butler, Portland resident. Well, things have changed a lot since I went sorry. So when I last talked here about the sand filtration project, I told you that if I had time in my testimony, I'd explain why I referred to it as a $3 billion project. So I didn't have time, so let's talk about that. It's a $3 billion project. Just real simply, if you calculate the interest, I use 2.5% as the weighted average interest rate on multiple loans for this project, 30-year amortization. That's $900 million. So you add $900 million to the $2.1 million capital cost, we're at $3 billion. So that's how we get to $3 billion, and I think that's the number the public ought to have in mind, incidentally, including the city council. It's not 2.1. The second thing is kind of a new thing. I think it's a big thing, even though percentage-wise maybe not so great. So Gresham is going to have their wells online in 2026, so bye-bye Bull Run. As Gresham is a customer of Bull Run, that's too bad for everybody, particularly Portlanders. So they're at, oh, 20, about, they're at 12 million gallons per day, Gresham, that they buy from Bull Run. So that's Bull Run water that we're not going to have any customers for, and the rest of us, they're going to have to share that. And then there's the Twelton Valley Water District. They're leaving Bull Run, too, aren't they? So 72% of their water comes from Bull Run. They'll be up and running in 2026 as well. So we're losing 26 million gallons per day in customers, which is in revenues, and that's about 13% of our revenues. So to make up those revenues, we're going to have to share a greater load than promised, and we haven't even started. So that also, loss of revenue of $400 million, $400 million loss, means that our reserve, our big reserve, I'm sorry about that, our reserve, $150 million, is now gone. It's gone. And now it's $250 million in the negative because of what's happening that nobody talked about. So I want you to reconsider what you're doing. This is a big change. It's only been since April 10th, three months. I don't know any...
Robert, we're at three, so thank you. Now on to the regular agenda. Kealan, please read items 665 and 666 together.
Item 665, accept recommendation of Chief Procurement Officer to award contract to More Excavation Incorporated for the North Schmear Road, east of Whittaker Road project for $1,430,623. Item 666, accept recommendation of Chief Procurement Officer to award contract to Raymore Construction LLC for a guaranteed maximum price of $42,800,000 for pre-construction and construction of the 82nd Avenue Major Maintenance Project.
So item 665 authorizes the Portland Water Bureau to move forward a project along North Schmear Road, east of Whittaker Road, align water infrastructure along the newly-developed right-of-way. Interim Chief Procurement Officer Kathleen Mo Ruua is here to present the report. Welcome, Kathleen.
Thank you. Good morning. For the record, I'm Kathleen Brennis Mo Ruua, interim Chief Procurement Officer, and I am here to recommend authorization to enter into a contract with More Excavation Incorporated for the North Schmear Road, east of Whittaker Road project. City Council approved ordinance 191107 on December 14th, 2022, and the project construction estimate was $1,386,000 with a high confidence level. Procurement Services issued the invitation to bid, and three bids were received on June 4th of 2024. More Excavation Incorporated submitted the lowest responsive bid in the amount of $1,430,623, which is approximately 3% over the estimate. The city's aspirational 20% subcontractor and supplier utilization goal applied. More Excavation has committed to subcontract 20% to contractors certified by the State Certification Office for Business Inclusion and Diversity, as identified in the report before you. More Excavation has self-performing the remaining 80% of the work. More Excavation Incorporated is in full compliance with all city contracting requirements, and I recommend that you accept this report and authorize execution of the contract.
So before moving on to public testimony, just want to speak to item 666, which allows the Portland Bureau of Transportation to move forward with the construction work of the 82nd Avenue Major Maintenance Project. Please continue, Chief Procurement Officer.
Thank you.
And I believe Brianna Orr is joining you from PBOT.
That is correct. We are here. Brianna Orr, Capital Project Manager with the Bureau of Transportation. We're here to recommend authorization to enter into a contract with Raymore Construction for the 82nd Avenue Major Maintenance Project. Council approved an exemption from the low-bid procurement method on December 14th of 2022, authorizing procurement services to conduct a request for proposals solicitation process for construction manager general contractor services. The construction services estimate was estimated between $30 to $40 million and had a low-confidence level rating. We issued a request for proposals on February 24th of 2023 and received two proposals on April 4th of '23. The proposals were evaluated by a four-member evaluation committee, and the committee recommended the contract be awarded to Raymore Construction for pre-construction services that included collaborative project design, constructibility reviews, development of construction, procurement, management, equity, and safety plans, and the development of the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of the project. Brianna is here. She has a brief presentation, and we'll talk more about the guaranteed maximum price.
Thank you, Kathleen. Good morning, Commissioners. Again, for the record, my name's Brianna Orr, and I'm a Capital Project Manager for the Bureau of Transportation. I'm excited to share information about PBOT's Building a Better 82nd Avenue program and the 82nd Avenue Major Maintenance Project on behalf of our team. So the Building a Better 82nd Avenue program is a multi-year investment with two main phases of work. Our near-term improvements, critical fixes, is already underway and will finish in 2026, and the major maintenance project is a part of this near-term work. The second phase of work will start in 2026. The second phase of work will start in 2026. So for critical fixes, we have $80 million in funding from the American Rescue Plan Act. This money must be spent by 2026. And we also have $5 million from the Portland Clean Energy Fund to support tree planting on 82nd Avenue. For the second phase of work, we have $70 million in funding from the Oregon Department of Transportation and a remaining $30 million city commitment. And while these investments are significant, there will still be a huge funding gap for needed safety and maintenance improvements along the corridor. And that's because these needs are vast. Here are just a few example photos of current conditions of our assets and the safety issues, including sidewalks, pavement, street lighting, curb ramps, and a lack of safe places to cross the street. In addition to these current conditions, our near-term work on 82nd is informed by crash data. 82nd Avenue is one of the city's high-crash corridors, averaging two deaths and 13 serious injuries per year, which equates to 5% of our citywide totals. There are a number of factors that contribute to fatal and serious injuries along the corridor, and on this slide is a map of the hotspots of where we see these fatal and serious crashes These hotspots informed our major maintenance project areas, which are indicated in those black boxes. So a little bit more about this project. The 82nd Avenue Major Maintenance Project will improve two segments of 82nd from northeast Fremont to Skylar and southeast Mill to Foster Road. Funding for this project includes $56 million from that American Rescue Plan Act funding and $1 million from PSEF to support tree plantings. Construction is expected to take two and a half years, beginning later this year and concluding before that 2026 funding deadline. A little bit more about the scope of this project. The project includes two miles of repaving, 140 88 curb-compliant ramps, sidewalk spot widening, five new or upgraded traffic signals, two new or upgraded signalized pedestrian crossings, and 175 trees planted in medians and along segments of sidewalk. And on this slide, you can see a current condition photo. This is southeast 82nd Avenue looking south towards Foster Road, and an artist's rendering of what this same area will look like after the project is complete. So as part of this project, we've done a lot of community engagement, and I've shared here a few photos from time we've spent with the public at open houses and tabling events, community walks, and community events. And to put a finer detail on these engagement activities, we've released 30, 60, and draft final concept designs, which we translated to the four languages most commonly spoken along the corridor. We hosted five in-person open houses and two online surveys. We went door-to-door to businesses, talking to about 250 businesses along the corridor. We also met one-on-one with 50 business owners and managers, participated in 18 meetings with neighborhood associations and organizations, 12 community events and walks, 31,000 letters and postcards, and also sent 36 bi-weekly email updates to our 2,700 subscribers. So as you can see, we've worked really closely with the business community and the overall community on this project. And on this next slide, I've included just a handful of our vocal supporters on, about this project. The project has been endorsed by the 82nd Avenue Business Association, and both Collective Oregon Eaterys or Core Food Carts and Todd's Pointless Tires has shared their support for the project. We've also been working closely with the 82nd Avenue Community Coalition, which is a coalition of organizations, including Oregon Walks, Apano Verde, and Unite Oregon. So lastly, I just want to touch on a couple benefits of the CMGC delivery method that we've selected, because we've seen two big benefits from using it on this project. First, there's schedule benefits. By using this method, highlighted in the blue schedule at the bottom, we've been able to meet our strict use-it-or-lose-it funding deadline of 2026. And this just wouldn't be possible with the traditional design-bid-build schedule, which is highlighted in the gray on the top of this slide. And secondly, our CMGC contractor, Raymore Construction, is projecting they will surpass our subcontractor equity goals. I've listed the aspirational goals here from the construction diversity-inclusion policy, and Raymore projects they are going to surpass these goals by nearly double the percentage points. Raymore has committed to meeting the goals of the Regional Workforce Equity Agreement, or the RWEA, as well. Thank you so much for your time today. I'm going to pass it back to Kathleen to close this out.
Thank you, Brianna. Raymore Construction is a state-certified minority business enterprise. They are in full compliance with all city contracting requirements, and I hereby recommend you accept the guaranteed maximum price and execution of this contract.
Fantastic. Kealan, do we have anyone signed up for public testimony?
We have people signed up for both items.
Okay. I'll let you read them in.
Okay. For item 665, we have Johnny Cortez Galindo.
Oh, Commissioner Ryan did have a question. I'm sorry, I didn't see his hand there.
Yeah. I think this question would be relevant before the testimony, but I'm just a suggestion. I didn't see schools listed on your map. So there's McDaniel's.
Yes.
There's elementary school there.
Yes.
And so much of our concern is with pedestrian safety, is about our children and our youth. So in the future, could you consider, in addition to parks, adding schools on the map?
Yes. Great point. Thank you.
Go back to public testimony.
Okay. Johnny Cortez Galindo. I don't think they've joined us. Bridge Crane, Simka Johnson.
If you don't mind staying up here, that'd be great. Just... Welcome. You have three minutes. You know the drill. Please state your...
Thank you, Mr. President. Charles Bridge Crane, Simka Johnson. Y'all are poster children or cover models or something today for street routes. Not your individual faces, but just, of course, the historic logo. I think I'll be able to provide you with a copy for these. Wow, the joys of the city getting control of 82nd Avenue, fortunately at a time when we can use American Rescue funds and not have to try and drive Commissioner Maps insane by trying to fix 82nd within the PBOT budget. When we look at the, you know, there's a little bit of talk about the diversity of the workforce for Raymore on this, and of course, we're all very grateful for influx of hombres buenos or whatever that actually make the city work. But when we're talking about minority involvement and improving minority representation in the workforce, I really think that we need to become a little bit more serious about Juneteenth, about MLK Day, about Black History Month, and honestly talk about stagnation of median family income, particularly for African-American Portland residents. Maybe there's not stagnation, but we know that there's a huge and unfortunate median family income gap among the different ethnic groups in our city. And when we're having a focus on the progress that's been made since 1865, we really need to look for opportunities, not to say, oh, great, we're going to have strong minority representation in the workforce working on 82nd, but we need to go to the bigger picture to find out, are we getting diverse background of people into above median income jobs? So while we celebrate the fact that the federal government financially kind of saved our whatevers out of the fire of having to make 82nd a more livable, safe, less of a heat sink street, you know, let's talk consistently throughout the year about doing the maximum good for the communities that get mentioned when we talk about DEI and workforce diversity. Let's just make that token phrase, but use those holidays to address that issue and the systemic problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, for item 666, we have Heather Phipps. Heather Phipps, and then Bridge Crane, you signed up for both, are you?
We got it.
You're good. Okay. That completes testimony.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Any additional discussion?
No.
Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Maps, seconded by Commissioner Ryan. Kealan, please call the roll.
And then, just to clarify, this is for item 665.
I'm sorry. Yes, that's for 665.
Okay, great. Thank you. Maps?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye. Now, with respect to 666...
I move to accept this report.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Maps, seconded by Commissioner Ryan. Kealan, please call the roll.
Maps?
Aye.
Ryan?
Yeah, I just want to say I was pleased to hear the COVID numbers on the second one. It was, for some reason, more challenging to find than the first one, and they're actually way higher, so it's great. I vote aye.
Gonzalez?
I vote aye. The report is accepted. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is a second reading of a non-emergency ordinance. Kealan, item 667, please.
Amend contract with Gresham Automotive Incorporated DBA Gresham Ford to increase not to exceed amount by $5 million for purchase of vehicles.
So item 667 is a second reading of a non-emergency ordinance. We've already had this presented to us and an opportunity for public discussion. Is there any further business on this item? Hearing none. Kealan, please call the roll.
Maps?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye. The ordinance passes. Next is a second reading of a non-emergency ordinance. Kealan, item 668, please.
Amend the FY 2024/25 adopted budget to provide a temporary inter-fund loan not to exceed $45 million from Portland Parks and Recreation to fire and police disability and retirement to provide interim financing for cash flow deficit due to the timing of property tax collections.
Boy, that's a mouthful. Item 668 is also a second reading. We've already had this presented to us and an opportunity for public discussion. Is there any further business on this item? Seeing none. Kealan, please call the roll.
Maps?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye. The ordinance passes. Kealan, does this conclude this morning's business?
It does.
With that, we are adjourned until this afternoon at 2:00 PM.
Wow. Yeah.[1708.47]